Thank you. Good evening. We will call to order the Thursday, November 14th meeting of the Capitola City Council. We are about to recess to closed session. Do we have any public comment on our closed session items before we do so? Seeing none, we will recess to closed session and return at 6:00 P. M. Good evening, everyone. We are going to go ahead and call to order the November 14th meeting of the Capitola City Council. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
And Mayor Brown.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay. We are going to move on then to presentations, and we will start with our presentation on our Mayor for a Day Youth Essay Contest.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Luke Cotney, who is our middle school division winner for our essay contest Mayor for a Day. And so with your permission, he will come up and read his essay.
Congratulations, Luke. Come on up. I'm going to leave the gavel here in case you need it. Feel free to bang on the desk.
E-bikes are great, but Capitola needs to regulate riders. E-bikes are starting to take over the streets at an alarming rate, and we need to consider how to keep the streets of Capitola safe for everyone, riders, drivers, pedestrians, and pets. As Mayor for a Day, I propose to regulate folks who ride these vehicles. Kids as young as eight are riding e-bikes through our streets, often without helmets, and kids and some adults of all ages are riding without any regard to safety. Many bikes are running stop signs, ignoring pedestrians, or blowing class cars unsafely. Just as scary, a portion of e-bikers don't even buckle their helmets. That's like wearing a hat while biking. It will do nothing in a crash. That's why, as Mayor, I would propose to regulation on requiring people to take written and riding tests before they are allowed to ride in Capitola, and encourage the police department to take existing helmet laws seriously. I see the test being administered by the DMV and would work closely with the state to make this happen. The test would include an obstacle course with regular road sides and a written portion regarding road rules. Riders would then be issued an e-bike license that would have to be renewed every three years. I'd suggest that the test cost would be $15 per rider to make it affordable for all. The incentive to take the test would be riding an e-bike without your license would incur a hefty fine, say $100. As Mayor, I'd like to work with B-Cycle, the e-bike rental company operating throughout the county, to see whether the creation of an e-bike license could persuade them to lower the age for rentals to kids 13 ages or older to have their e-bike license. This would create a new market for them, increase mobility access for kids and families who might not be able to afford an e-bike at home. In conclusion, I hope to make electric bike ridership more responsible, reduce e-bike crashes, and increase access, and help keep everyone safer on the road.
Great job!
Thank you.
I like these ideas. Should we get a picture? All right. Yeah, you got to bang your gavel. With authority! I love it! All right, let's, uh, do you want to get up here? Okay, yeah, here, let's get.
Great job!
Congratulations! And we have a mayor's certificate for you, congratulating you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you want a picture with the certificate? Okay. The mayor's. All right, Mayor Cotney, congratulations. Thank you so much. I'll look forward to voting for you one day. Yeah. I like those ideas. I know, those are really good ideas. All right. Thank you again to Mayor Cotney, and we will move on now to item four, our report on closed session.
Good evening. Closed session was had on the items of the agenda, on the agenda, and no reportable action was taken.
Okay. Do we have any additional materials for this evening's agenda?
Staff received correspondence relating to item 9B, which was included in the agenda packet for public review. In addition, staff has changes to attachment one to item 9B, which those changes will be read into the record during the staff presentation before approval of that item.
Thank you. We are going to go now to item six, oral communications by members of the public. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any item not on tonight's agenda or on the consent agenda, on any topic that is within the jurisdiction of the city. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Goran Klavic. I'm former security guard of Zelos on the Beach. One time I worked the front door with my black brother, George, the door. I think yesterday, or today again, I was offered 7.7 grams of methamphetamine for sale. This idiot didn't know that he was talking to somebody who worked in law enforcement overseas for a while and combating such illegal activity. I want to warn you as city council membership that there are such things happening in the streets of Capitola and suburban areas here in the county. Thank you very much for listening. God bless you.
Thank you.
Hello. Please excuse me, I have a tickle in my throat tonight. So, tonight I'd like to talk about a curious thing, which is power. It resides where people believe it resides. It's a trick, a shadow on the wall, and a very small man can cast a very large shadow. Why am I saying this, though? Your guy's job is not to rule over us. Your guy's job is as middlemen between us and government. So when your constituents write emails to you, you should answer those emails. You don't have to do what they say, but respond. Show that government goes both ways. When people ask legitimate questions from this dais, please instruct staff to answer those questions. That's how it used to be here, and that's how it really should be everywhere. And I'm not telling you guys this because it's the right thing to do. It is. I'm not saying you guys should do this because it will make our city function better. It will. I'm telling you guys to do this because the human being on the other end of that email might be a generational political strategic talent who can derail your career. So, please, in the future, answer emails, oh, and questions. And since I have some time left, I do have a question for tonight. What do you guys think of Mustache? Thank you.
Any further public comment? Hi, welcome.
Thank you. So today, Trump appointed Robert F. Kennedy Jr. to head Health and Human Services. I have a book by Robert F. Kennedy Jr. that came out in 2021 called "The Real Anthony Fauci: Bill Gates, Big Pharma, and the Global War on Democracy and Public Health." And he is trying to make it a healthier America if he's confirmed by the Senate. This book has so many footnotes and documentation that one can't refute. I just want to read a small section called "Vaccinating Children Is Unethical." And many have been coerced into getting the COVID shots, including employees of Capitola who I spoke to. Our collective nausea can only amplify when we ask, "Why aren't we vaccinating children?" Kirsch's model estimates that 600 children have already died from COVID vaccines as of September 2021. That's when the book came out. A recent Lancet study shows that a healthy child has zero risk for COVID, suggesting that most of these kids are dying unnecessarily. Some 86% of children suffered an adverse reaction to the Pfizer COVID vaccine in clinical trial, and one in nine children suffered a serious reaction grave enough to leave them unable to perform daily activities. How can we then justify forcing a healthy child to take a vaccine that is dead certain to injure many and kill some while besowing no benefits? How can anyone consider it ethical, as Kirsch quote, "to put a child at risk for the pretext that it might yield an adult? Show me any adult who thinks this is okay, and I'll show you a monster," unquote. COVID-19 vaccines have caused cardiac arrest, blindness, and paralysis in American children, and it goes on. Of course, the documentation is much more severe in the years that have followed. A book just came out called "The Pfizer Papers."
Thank you.
Showing Pfizer knew of these health injuries.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further public comment this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we will bring it back, and we will go to staff and city council comments. Any staff comments? No? Okay, council comments. We'll start at this end. Comments? No? Comments? Any council comments? All righty then, we're going to move right along. We will move on now to our consent agenda. All items on consent will be enacted by one motion in the form listed on the agenda, unless a member of the council would like to pull any items. Seeing none.
I can move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We will go now to item 9A, Stockton Bridge Debris Mitigation Project Update. Hello?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We've been doing quite a lot of work towards our bridge lately. I'm very excited to share this with you this evening, very engineering. Next slide, please. So, the Stockton Bridge is our sole bridge in town for vehicular traffic. These bridges are regulated by state and federal agencies, specifically Caltrans and the FHWA. So specifically, Stockton Bridge is Bridge 36C0110. So if you Google that, Stockton Bridge will pop up, and all kinds of information, including all of Caltrans inspections that happen every two years, will pop up. It is the sole crossing of SoCal Creek below the highway, and it has a fairly large traffic volume, about 20,000 average daily traffic per day, and that's going in both directions. Next slide, please. The Stockton Bridge is what's considered a box skater bridge, so it is hollow inside, and the utilities go through it. It is a lightweight bridge. It was very popular in the early 1930s. It replaced an older iron and wood bridge, and it was built by 15 people with a New Deal workmen's, I'm sorry, I made notes so I would remember. Works Project Progress Administration was a New Deal agency that built this bridge in approximately 150 days for $25,000. So it is quite old, using new technology at the time. It's about 138 feet across and 42 feet of width. Next slide, please. The bridge has two piers and then, and then a, I'm sorry, three delineations between the, between the piers. This is a picture when it was fairly new in the 1950s. Next slide. So it is the last bridge of its oldest bridge of its type in California. So there were some built before them, of which have been demolished, and many after them that have been demolished in the state of California. This type of bridge is still built, but not in the same way. All of the upstream bridges on SoCal Creek have since been replaced from their original construction, construction, most recently in the SoCal neighborhood in 2002. There have been long-time flooding concerns with this bridge, with the piers being in the, in the creek. The smallest span is about 10 feet, and large woody debris, which was the technical term for trees and stuff in the creek, tends to be quite larger than that. So there is documentation in city council minutes of this concern as early as 1951. Next slide, please. And then also more recently, our floods of this past few years, it's also been a concern where large woody debris has been stuck on the piers, and we have hired cranes and operators to remove that debris before it became a flooding issue. Next slide, please. So this has been identified as an issue for quite some time. In 2013 and 2020, the city identified the bridge as a critical flood hazard in its hazard mitigation plan. Hazard mitigation plans are used to identify local hazards and potential solutions within the city, and also makes us eligible for certain types of funding. In 2016, the council authorized a due diligence memorandum to look into options to mitigate debris in the creek and around the bridge. This was a concept-only report, so it was a paper report. There were no hydrological studies done at this time. It was just really comparing common options for debris mitigation across the country. We put $350,000 to this budget in fiscal year '22 and '23, and in the last cycle, the state budget, supported by State Senator John Laird, we were awarded additional $500,000 for both evaluating and constructing a debris diversion method. So the first step of determining what that method should be was to conduct a feasibility study, so doing those technical studies of those options that we had looked into before to see what would be the best option for debris mitigation in the creek. Next slide, please. So we went out to bid. The award for this feasibility study was awarded to CSW ST2, which is the same group that is doing our study for our Cliff Drive Resiliency Project, so they're very familiar with the area in our city. And the objective of the study was to evaluate those mitigation measures identified, to analyze not only the debris flow pattern, but also just hydraulic flow, how water runs through the creek and under the bridge. And then additional considerations of potential mitigations include environmental impacts, obviously, permitting requirements, of which there are many within SoCal Creek, and then obviously cost analysis. Next slide, please. So these are the five mitigation options. I'm going to go over them relatively quickly, but there is a ton of information in the attached memorandum to your staff report, and I'm happy to answer any detailed questions you might have on these. So, next slide. The first consideration were the debris diversion fens, and this was the recommendation in our due diligence memorandum from Kim Lee Horn in 2016. So these are vertical fens that go either directly on the piers or immediately upstream of the piers, and the idea is for large woody debris to hit these deflections and then go under the spans of the creek. It became apparent with the hydrological study that this reduces capacity. It really makes water back up, and really is not a good solution for flood risk reduction. Just them being in the creek without any woody debris on them would cause potential flooding. Next slide. Another debris diversion mitigation could be a cage. It's the same idea. This one's on a culvert, but it can also be on bridges. I could not find any projects that were on a bridge, so it is not a very common solution for debris diversions under a bridge. But the idea is the same as fens, that would deflect it between the piers. This is a little hydrologically better because the water flows through the, through the cage, but tends to catch a lot of small debris, so we'd be in there quite a bit, collecting small debris to prevent flooding rather than collecting big debris around the piers. Next slide. Another potential mitigation is debris diversion piers, which appear to be sticks in the water, but really take quite a lot of calculation and study to figure out exactly where they should be placed for them to work correctly. They're really ideal for bridges that have one-way flow, as we know from our storms of last winter. Sometimes we do have two-way flow. There was that picture of that surfer in there from a couple winters ago, and they also require significant regular maintenance to remove the large woody debris that gets stuck here rather than at the bridge. So it's not as great of a deflector as it is a catcher of debris prior to getting to the bridge. Next slide. Another debris diversion mitigation is mitigation is a debris sweeper, which this large turbine-looking item spins in the creek and kind of bounces stuff out in between the piers. These are very popular on the East Coast and are also known for having really a lot of maintenance and a high failure rate. So also not really an ideal mitigation option for something that we need to work in a high-flow situation. Next slide. The last mitigation would be a bridge replacement. This one is more intuitive, where you just take the piers out of the creek, and they will no longer be catching debris. It also allows more water just all the time to go under the bridge. They have minimal environmental impacts after the bridge is created, and really has the opportunity to improve transportation and connectivity, as I'll explain in a later slide. Obviously, the downside to this one is it requires significant planning and significant funding to achieve, which is generally a multi-year effort. Next slide, please. So this matrix is in your, in the staff report, in your packet, just to make it a little more visual of the highs and lows of each, each mitigation. Obviously, the bridge has the most screen, with the one high one being cost, which the cost difference is significant. All of these are more than a million-dollar projects. A bridge project is more in the $15 to $20 million range. Next slide, please. So the recommended mitigation from our study is a bridge replacement. It's the most effective long-term solution that really requires little to no maintenance over time, and has a minimal environmental impact, or increases hydraulic capacity, and has the potential to be aesthetically similar to what is already existing in, with the existing bridge. A lot of those debris mitigation measures included things that were quite unsightly. It would definitely, during the replacement process, result in temporary circulation impacts. We'd expect this to be a five- to six-month project in construction, which, dependent on multitude of things, could be quite a bit longer amount of time. If directed, staff would initiate the planning and design for this project and pursue extra money to go and construct this eventually, and then obviously continue monitoring the debris accumulation. Next slide, please. I do want to say that we are very aware that this bridge is historic and has great significance to the community. I had Deborah find quite a few fun pictures of historic times in the creek. There used to be races at the creek, obviously, the Begonia Festival, and then it is currently the end of the Wharf to Wharf, so it has historical significance, obviously, just because of its age, but also has a lot of community heritage tied to it. Next slide, please. It's also just pretty. These are all, it's of the, you know, the 1930s. It has that lovely look, and so that's something that would really be put into consideration with any kind of replacement project. Next slide, please. It also has a visual impact. It really says Capitola. It's between the Venetians and between the village, and it really contributes to the community character overall. It's very recognizable, this bridge is in Capitola. Next slide, please. And then the transportation and connectivity is obvious. It connects two sides of town. It is an emergency evacuation route. It is a commute route for many people, and so it curies a lot of traffic for our small town. Next slide, please. That said, it also is undersized for alternative modes of transportation. The sidewalk is not ADA, obviously. It was built in 1934. It's relatively narrow, as is the bike lane. So replacing a bridge would also allow for enhanced transportation options for non-vehicular traffic. Next slide, please. So this project is a long-haul project. It is multi-years to develop, multi-years to get funded. These projects are not a short-term project. They really involve a ton of community engagement and determining the environmental compliance, and having a lot of hearings at other agencies, and meeting regulatory standards that then really feed into the design and engineering that allow us to have something that the community is really behind aesthetically, and really provides us the resilience and the transportation improvements that we need. Again, funding is ongoing. I would anticipate us applying for funding over multiple rounds of multiple funders before we would be awarded funding for this project. Next slide, please. So the current total project funding is $850,000, $500,000 from the Department of Water Resources, and $350,000 previously budgeted. This would get us to a shovel-ready project, which is really competitive for all of these funding programs. We would need CD, the Cal, or Department of Water Resources approval to use these funds to not construct something. Currently, it's for design and construction of a mitigation measure. I have talked to their staff, and it is likely to be approved, but we do have to formally request for that money to be used for design purposes. And the next steps would be to explore additional funding for full implementation in the same time as developing this project. Next slide, please. So the recommended action is there on the screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this process.
Thank you. Questions?
This is, I'm sure, a silly question, but there's no reasonable way to just move the builders further out while maintaining the same bridge to modify the structure in some way.
No. It is like very much in like one piece, which was amazing for the time, but not great for modification.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. The first is just to make us feel okay that the bridge is seismically safe and sound today. This is just to deal with debris coming through during storms and such, and just being proactive, and that, is that the case, or the reasoning behind why we're looking at this project today?
At this time, yes, it is very much seismically sound. I think something that caught off of one of the slides was this is rated a 60 out of 100 by Caltrans for what's called sufficiency rating. There are definitely bridges in this county that are rated a lot less that are also seismically sound. I will say this bridge shook on damage in our last set of storms, which we repaired with FHWA monies, which is also why we were allocated the $500,000. So is it safe for now? Yes, but it definitely has potential to be damaged further in the future.
Okay, and there's definitely plans in place for the next storms that should come with, we're ready to react, or with cranes and things like that while we try to find and seek funding. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, the, the other question I have is just about timing, and I know this is hard to project, but we're also looking at Cliff Drive as a potential huge project that should it, there be work done, it'll impact our community, traffic, all of that sort of stuff. And just when we're looking at the long-term plans on our big projects taking place in Capitola, do you see any reason to time the grant writing process differently based off of looking at funds for like Cliff Drive and our other projects, just so the impact to our community and traffic wouldn't be so, so much?
Sure. So Cliff Drive and the bridge are two major pieces, expensive pieces of infrastructure. Cliff Drive is on a very short timeline at this point. We have allocated funding from FHWA that we have to request from them by September of next year, so while we are looking for additional funding for that, it has to meet up with that timeline, or our bridge funding timeline would be much further out.
Okay. Thank you.
Question is, has it been looked into retrofitting the bridge, since it is hollow? I mean, are there any ways they can engineer what we have, move the span?
which is also why we were allocated the $500,000. So is it safe for now? Yes, but it definitely has potential to be damaged further in the future.
Okay, and there's definitely plans in place for the next storms that should come with, we're ready to react, or with cranes and things like that while we try to find and seek funding. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the other question I have is just about timing. And I know this is hard to project, but we're also looking at Cliff Drive as a potential huge project that should there be work done, it'll impact our community, traffic, all of that sort of stuff. And just when we're looking at the long-term plans on our big projects taking place in Capitola, do you see any reason to time the grant writing process differently based off of looking at funds for like Cliff Drive and our other projects just so the impact to our community and traffic wouldn't be so much?
Sure, so Cliff Drive and the bridge are two major pieces, expensive pieces of infrastructure. Cliff Drive is on a very short timeline at this point. We have allocated funding from FHWA that we have to request from them by September of next year. So while we are looking for additional funding for that, it has to meet up with that timeline or our bridge funding timeline would be much further out.
Okay, thank you.
Question is, has it been looked into retrofitting the bridge since it is hollow? I mean, are there any ways they can engineer what we have, move the spans?
Unfortunately, not, just due to its age. It probably wouldn't withstand that. And just the way it was built, it's not a type of bridge that you really build onto. There are definitely types of span bridges where you can build onto and expand. This isn't one of them, both for the time that it was built, but just also the type of bridge that it is.
So essentially, whatever new structure is there is going to be, is it going to be much wider? Is there like an idea of how to have a bigger bike lane and ADA sidewalks? Like, is there, is it going to be a major impact to the size?
That would be ideal. I think we definitely have constraints because there are buildings there and like right-of-way issues and also environmental issues when you get a abutment that's really large that causes more environmental and tree issues. But I think part, my assumption is through part of this process that we had identified that we would like to expand those bike lanes and sidewalks to be more accommodating to the traffic that we already have on the span.
Okay, thanks.
All right, if there's no further council comment, we'll take it to public comment. Hi, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Dave Fox. I live up on McCormick Avenue. I've lived there for 55 years. And I was watching TV, and it said this meeting was going on discussing the bridge. And I went, give me a break. I got to go down there and say something. I think you should take all the money you're spending on what you're doing right now and fix our roads. The roads in town, I walk the roads every day. They're falling apart. How often has that bridge really caused a problem in this city? What about when the SoCal Bridge had, they had to throw an explosion in the water to break up the debris years ago? If you took any part of this amount of money you're talking about spending and just take care of the debris coming down the creek, we wouldn't even be having this meeting. Or you wouldn't need to have it. So I just don't understand why you're doing this bridge thing rather than taking care of our roads. Because each of you must be walking around town and seeing how they are so deteriorated.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Hello again. So with this bridge project, I don't really care how you guys do it. I think the money is, this is a long-term project. That sidewalk, especially on the beach side, the sheer amount of people who use that sidewalk daily. I use that sidewalk every day. You can't fit two strollers in each direction, and that's our rail trail because we don't have a rail corridor. Our rail corridor is right through town now. On top of that, it's a major commuter path in the afternoon in particularly. This is bumper-to-bumper traffic. Some of the trucks are so big on that bridge that they're actually in the bike lane the entire time they're driving across it. So any project we do should prioritize pedestrians, the fact that it is a key tourist path between the Venetian, all the STRs up there, I mean, so many STRs, and of course, our fantastic new wharf, and then all the Yesslannod and the Village, and then a protected bike lane. It can't just be a bike lane with paint. That's just ridiculous in this day and age in a lower coastal California village. Like, they'd never put up with that crap in Carmel. Like, let's be better, guys. Let's do some smart things with our infrastructure. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. That was very informative, certainly, the different options. My question is, is that bridge in structurally strong enough condition to remain and just take care more of the debris? That's what I'm wondering. I know the Works Project Administration built a lot of bridges that were quite solid and well-done during the FDR administration. So that's, and then I think of the seawater rise and the storms and just wonder how wise it is to invest a lot of money in reconstructing. I don't know, I just have a lot of questions. I wanted to hear this gentleman elaborate on his comments. And I wish there were someone, you know, to hear more pros and cons of the different projects. I noticed one of those had a high rate of failure. I thought, well, that doesn't sound good. The cage looked interesting. It's all new information to me, so I'm just raising those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for discussion and a vote. And I want to just start briefly by addressing one of the questions that came up during public comment because I think it's important for the public to know. So the funding that we've received, the $500,000 in grant funds from the California Department of Water Resources for the debris mitigation project specifically, any funding we get from the state or federal government, they give to us for a very specific use, and we're not allowed to use it for anything else legally. So if we were to say, we're going to take this money away from the bridge and put it towards the roads, essentially, the state would come after us and say, you have to give all this money back. This is not what we gave it to you for, and it makes it less likely that we're going to get funding in the future. So certainly, the concerns about the roads, hear you loud and clear, and definitely something that we're going to continue to work on. But I think it is important that the public know that we're not taking money away from roads, that we're not using money that could otherwise be used on roads, that any money that goes towards this bridge project will be solely because it was authorized through grants, state or federal, for the bridge project. Correct? Okay, well, thank you. Okay, questions, comments, discussion? None? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Just have another question regarding Mr. Fox's comment, actually, about using dynamite. I just want to hear from you. I thought about that myself, and my personal conclusion was that that would be dangerous. Yeah, to remove the debris, right?
So, sir, I'm sorry, we've closed our public comment period. So dynamite to move debris.
Why isn't it done anymore?
So I don't have any professional experience with using dynamite for debris mitigation. I will say that I considered putting a picture of that log jam in the presentation because it was very, very significant, and that bridge has since been replaced for this reason.
For this reason, yeah.
SoCal Bridge. During that time period, they had piers in the, in the 80s, they had the piers in the creek.
Well, my understanding is the point of this project is so that we don't have to worry about debris anymore. We don't have to worry about debris mitigation. We don't need to worry about getting rid of it. It's just going to blow right through. Yeah, I can, I would, I would be curious. I mean, it's not that important right this second, but I can imagine that over the years that we've had to use equipment rentals and different services, that the cost of that to remove the debris probably adds up over the years and would continue to add up over the years if we weren't to do something to address it.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that.
Yeah.
It would be something to look into, to go up to the city limit towards Highway 1, what we're doing these projects, and mitigate all the lumber and timber trees that are in there. I think it would be significant because there are quite a few of those things up there. It would well be worth it.
You mean the ones that are in the creek right now?
They're in the creek now.
Yeah.
Even if we do decide to move forward with this, it's going to be a long time. And, you know, chances are there's going to be storms. So I think it's reasonable to look into that if there's some way that we can more, better prepare for winter storms in the meantime, at least. Yeah.
Okay. I just have a comment, if that's okay. I'm just grateful that we have an opportunity to see grant funding to take care of this project and not use city dollars right now at this time, that there's plenty of state funding, not city dollars, that we would be using on this project to move forward so that we don't have to deal with flooding and damage and people's lives being at stake, and we can focus on our streets and our roads. I think that's really important to our, the comments we heard earlier. So I definitely appreciate staff looking at all of the options that are available to us in terms of grant funding, the free dollars from the state and federal dollars, the free, gosh, did they hear me saying free? But the grant funding from the state and federal level, that's great. So I'm happy to make a motion to direct staff to utilize available funding to develop project plans and permits and solicit public feedback because we need all the feedback we can get from the community to rebuild Stockton Bridge to address flood risk and debris accumulation.
Second. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We will move on now to Item 9B, fiscal year 2425 city fee schedule.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This last item before you this evening is adoption of the city fee schedule for 2425. And just by way of background, typically, we update the fee schedule annually during the budget process. That way, we can reflect, keep current our cost of services and maintain cost recovery goals. Best management practices suggest that we do, or recommend that we do a fee study, a comprehensive fee study every five years. Our last one was done in 2015. We delayed kicking off this one due to the pandemic, but this past fiscal year, we hired Will Dan Financial Services, who completed our study for us. So the purpose of the fee study is to determine the actual cost of city services, recommend cost recovery rates that account for inflation, salary increases, service delivery changes. Also, add any new services and remove any discontinued services, and also to address any fees that are below full cost recovery to reduce dependency on the general fund. As a reminder, for state law, there are California propositions 218 and 26 where fees are restricted and cannot exceed the cost of actually providing the service. That's why we do the fee study to calculate that. And so just quickly to go through the recommended adjustments, in the Public Works Department, we have some increased fees around traffic control, plan reviews, construction parking permits, stormwater development reviews, and introduction of a new inspection and permit fees. Police Department, we have increase for special event permits and sound permits as well as new fees for vehicle boot removal and tow hearings. Next slide, please. Planning, there's actually several fees that are decreasing as we've just gained some efficiencies in how we provide those services. There are some new fees for complex applications and application related to bigger projects and environmental reviews. And then coming out of last week's public hearing, we set the fees to zero for childcare facilities. In the Building Division, we have building plan check fees and inspection fees adjusted for larger projects, new fees for permit extensions and reinstatements, begin charging fees for electrical vehicle charging permits and solar EV systems. And for state law, there's no fee for a solar hot water heater. Next slide, please. In Community Services and Recreation Department, there's a 2% increase in the facility rentals, but there's no increases recommended to youth program registration fees. There is a new fee for canceling or changing a registration or reservation. But other than that, the fees for programs remain unchanged. And then the last couple are, the historical museum has just a couple of fees, and there's no changes recommended there. And then I mentioned last week that the agreements for outdoor dining has inflationary factor in there. So we've adjusted that by 3.67% from a buck fifty a square foot to a dollar fifty-six. Next slide. I think there's been some questions about how I get that CPI number. So we use, and we use this for every lease that we have. We also use it for contracts that are multi-year contracts that have inflationary factors built in. So we use the annual year-over-year and then just do a standard percentage calculation there to apply it. So those are the numbers, the annual from 2022 versus the annual from 2023. When you do the math, it's 3.67%. Typically, that makes a little more sense because we're doing this in July, and these come out in like February. But because of the fee study, we're kind of delayed in implementing this. So it seems like it's a little off schedule by using last calendar year's schedule. But once we get back to our normal schedule, it'll kind of sync up better, if that makes sense. So staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing tonight and adopt the proposed city fee schedule for fiscal year 2425. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Council questions? No questions? Yeah.
Thank you, Jim, for bringing the information forward about the CPI. Would it be possible for you to send that information out to businesses affected by it? Just because they were, this is where the question came up. And just like the website and how that works and what you mean by the different months? Because, you know, when you said, it just could be confusing, especially if they're just Googling it. So it'd be great if you, if you could do that, that'd be great.
And there's multiple indexes out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So everyone that's affected by it, if you could send them that information, that'd be really helpful for them. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, we will go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Welcome back.
Thank you. Environmental reviews on, let's see, how to start here. It seems like there are more details to elaborate on what you just projected on the screen. But I'm always aware of problems with how the cell towers are going up all over the place and the costs involved in that for everyone in terms of health. And just to give you some facts here.
Ms. Garrett, just to confirm, this is on the fee schedule? This is, are you making a comment on our fee schedule this evening?
Well, how are, what are the fees on cell towers, Wi-Fi, smart meters? All fit into this.
Okay, go ahead.
Because they emit microwave radio frequency radiation causing DNA damage, blood-brain barrier disruption, increased cancer and tumor risk, decreased melatonin, insomnia. It's all documented. Abnormal heart rhythm, strokes. I mean, just when I go by the city of Capitola's huge cell tower on the freeway by Kennedy Drive between Bay Porter and Park, I get a horrible headache. I don't like to drive there. So what are the impacts? I mean, that needs to be, things that aren't safe should just be prohibited. That's what I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for deliberation and a vote. Any comments?
I do. And I should have brought this up last time, and I'm really sorry about it. The fees for charging stations and our solar fees have, is there a legal reason that we have those in place? Is there a reason we have to have those in place? And the reason I'm asking this is because our climate action plan goals that we have to meet by 2030 is to ensure that we have more people having, being able to put charging stations in place and all of those things, and yet we're charging people, and then they have to go and get a rebate later on and all of those things. So I'm looking to some answers here.
So there's, thank you, Vice Mayor Brooks. Just make a check. Just make a check. So a couple answers to the question. The first is, is on the vehicle charging. There is, as you correctly pointed out, there's a rebate right now that's available through Central Coast Community Energy that pays people back the cost of getting those chargers and doing the electrical work to do it. I've been through the process myself, and it didn't cost anything to do. It was fully rebated. So in that sense, when we were looking at our fees, it didn't seem to make sense to waive our fees for something that the residents can already get paid for, essentially, anyway.
Ask a question?
Yeah.
So why make them jump through the hoops now? Like, why have them pay the fees and then have to go through the rebate process now? We want to make it easier rather than...
That's certainly within the council's discretion. You know, if we could try to work with 3CE to see if they would rebate. I don't think, it would have to be a new program with Central Coast Community Energy. I think we would just forego that revenue. So that's the question, is, is right now, it can be paid for by Central Coast Community Energy, which obviously involves the homeowner fronting some of the money and then getting a rebate. Alternatively, if you want, you can set the fee to zero, save Central Coast Community Energy some money, makes it easier for some residents.
Yeah, do you, I mean, well, and so our goal, you know, our council goal was to find ways to meet our climate action plan before 2030 and all of those goals, and this is one of those things. And so as I was thinking about it further, charging people upfront and then seeking reimbursed, just making them go through more steps just doesn't really make sense for us. And it definitely doesn't help us meet our climate goals by that, so.
Yeah, I just, just thought of something. Is there a way that we could defer the payment so that the customer or the resident doesn't have to pay us upfront and get reimbursed, but that they could pay us at the point that they do get reimbursed? It may provide them some more financial flexibility in the matter?
Trying to think through, you know...
Increase the timeline of when they have to pay that fee.
I might need some help from our community development director. I, I, I'm thinking that usually these permits are applied for by the contractor. So the contractor comes in, and we issue them the permits, and they, they pay for them at the time.
I have a question along those lines. What time, our staff time, does it take? And, and the cost of that, is that what we're replacing?
That's what we're replacing with the fee, exactly. It's just covering our staff time.
Oh, yeah, how much staff time does it take to approve a charging permit?
Can you remind me exactly what the fee is? And I can probably backtrack to...
You're talking about the vehicle charging, electric vehicle charging?
Yeah, and the solar, there's two of them. And, and also...
The solar one's free.
Is a free one? So, and, and the only other reason is because I know that they also have to get other permits on top of those. So it's like permit, permit, permit for electricity or electrical, and then we're adding on this additional fee, right? That they, if this is in fact the project that they want to adopt.
It, it depends. Yeah, it's probably two hours of their time. And that's including like going out and doing the inspection. So probably an hour and a half to two hours.
Are we, are we eligible to get rebates if we don't charge fees? Can we get rebates of the staff time and the fee we would have charged, so that it goes through us instead of through the consumer?
It's something that we could try to propose at Central Coast Community Energy. You know, that takes, it just takes a vote at the board and staff time to put together a program. Yeah, I mean, they, they do a lot of things for member support, and so it's something that, you know, right now, you have two representatives on.
I was going to say, if only we had representation.
It's something definitely we could look at doing and just say, hey, you know, let's maybe make things a little bit easier. We'd be willing, for cities that are willing to, they just front the cost of these permits, and then we get refunded.
I think that'd be worth it.
I'd be, yeah, more interested in that than just foregoing any fee whatsoever, just because we have a great staff, and I do want to be reimbursed for their time.
Last question I have is, how much is the fee?
156 to 279, depending.
So, really quickly, if, if this was the direction we were going, if we set it at zero, I think it becomes a little bit more problematic to go to Central Coast Community Energy and say, hey, we, we waived this fee. You don't go for it?
Don't we charge half?
I said on, yeah, I said on, I don't think so. I think they're, and I could speak freely to this. Central Coast Community Energy has dollars that they look at, program dollars, and they're constantly looking at ways to invest these dollars back into every city, every jurisdiction they'll partner. And so if we came with this idea, I think that they would be open to the conversation, and especially because the funds are there now.
Yeah, I don't think we should miss out on dollars.
I don't think Central Coast Community Energy probably would want to be in the business of offsetting solar cells.
Right, this would be one of the charges.
Yeah, rooftop solar has other, there's other challenges associated with it, so that was kind of...
It's free anyways.
Solar's already free.
No, it's the hot water. Solar hot water's free. We're proposing that the rooftop solar does get charged.
So this is just for charging stations, like the plug-in? That's like the stuff on top of your house, solar?
The solar on top of house charging, leave it as is. But for the vehicle charging, I think, I think it's worth looking into 3CE. Providing rebates to jurisdictions, so that the jurisdictions can provide these permits for free.
Can we pull it to later? I don't know how the fee schedule works right now. Is that something that I could go back to 3CE staff and ask about that before adopting that one part of it? Or do you need it all today? Sure. We could adopt the fee schedule minus that fee. We could, and then if you wanted to impose that fee later, we would come back and add that fee to your fee schedule. I'd like to make that motion if the mayor is open to that. I think that's just really important with our climate action plan. This makes it easier for our residents to install vehicle charging stations, and they already have to get additional permits to do the other things, and then we're just tacking on another fee that just doesn't make it, just makes the process expensive and really cumbersome. And so if council would be open to me having that conversation with 3CE staff in the near future, and I, we can bring it back, I would like to make that motion to approve. And I mean, I'm sure there's more conversation with the rest of the fee schedule, but I'd like to adopt the fee schedule without the vehicle charging station fees as presented by staff today.
That is fine, but I, we have an amended resolution that we'd like you to look at.
Okay.
That I think was circulated as an addendum to the agenda. It includes, I think, a couple changes. One is, you'll see those highlighted whereas clauses are addition, additional findings that were made based on direction from the council at last week's meeting. And we had to publish the agenda before we were able to incorporate those findings. So those are some additional findings. And then there's a date change in there, which maybe the clerk could speak to.
It's just an administrative correction about the effective date of the fee schedule. Once adopted, it will become effective on January 1st of 2025. It was listed in the original resolution as December 1st of 2024. And then the effective date of the fiscal year thereafter would be July 1st, 2025. It was listed as 2024 in the original resolution. So they're minor, very technical changes to sections two and three of the final part of the resolution.
So I'll amend my motion to include the amendments to the resolution as presented by staff today.
I can second that.
And then I think, if you'll give me just a second, we're looking the exact name of the fee. Oh, my goodness, how is this font so small? So I think, Vice Mayor Brooks, your motion would be to adopt the resolution as amended and shown by the city clerk, with the exception of the fee, the electric vehicle charging permits fee, which is lines 11 through 14 on exhibits, on the fee schedule attached to the resolution, and also to give direction to staff consistent with what you stated earlier.
Yes.
I second that.
Okay. Yeah, discussion.
Yeah, so I have a question for maybe Councilmember Brooks, or maybe for staff, but just what, what's the rationale by not also including the rooftop solar fee? When we're trying to support, you know, green energy? Like, what's the difference between installing a charger and rooftop solar that we wouldn't want to also waive the solar fee?
Rooftop solar is challenging, and it's probably more of a conversation than we can have on this agenda at this time. I guess the main point I would give you is that we have so much solar coming on to the markets right now, and rooftop solar by individuals at this point isn't metered? Isn't, sorry, isn't, can't be throttled? So every day during the spring and summer, we're turning off industrial-scale solar. So that, that's the challenge that we're faced with, is finding a way to kind of control the solar coming on to the markets. And so it's probably not something that right now we need to be incentivizing people to do. We need to incentivize.
I mean, do we have 100% renewable energy at this point?
What's that?
Do we have 100% renewable energy?
Most days this last spring and summer, during the sunlit hours, we're 100% renewable in the state of California. Once you got through into August, no, not so much. But every year, it's, it's on such a rapid rate, it challenges the nighttime. So it's not the panels during the day, it's the challenges having that energy at night when the sun isn't shining. That's our, that's our next challenge.
Any further? No? Okay, further discussion?
I guess, just to express again that I would like to revisit the, um, how we waive fees as a city. I mean, this was a great example of kind of conversations we can be having later, probably after the strategic plan.
Great. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. That brings us to the end of our meeting. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is on November 1st here in Chambers at 6:00 PM. Until then, take care of yourselves and take care of each other. What? 21st? Yeah, is that what I said? December 20th, November 21st. See you then.